Good evening, everyone. The guy with the delay, we're on. Okay, could I, at this time, ask for a motion to come out of the executive session?
Still move.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And also ask for a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session.
We shall move.
And second?
Certainly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, exactly. Very good. Okay, beginning our regular town council meeting. If I could ask for a roll call, Mrs. George, please.
Lawson here.
Here.
Karen House here. Karen Gee.
Here.
Lynn Shively.
Here.
Graham Waters.
Present.
Mr. President.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Spearman, I understand, is in Las Vegas on a world-class vacation. So I guess I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You can all stand, ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we bear with me for the invocation, a brief... Dear Lord, we ask for your guidance here in Coventry, for your blessings. We ask that you have us remain civil tonight and every night, to take care of our families and loved ones, and to take care of the individuals that are not as well off as us. Amen.
Amen.
And lastly, Mr. Spearman usually covers the view of emergency evacuation plan. If a case of emergency, obviously, we have rear doors there, we have doors either side here and out, and obviously, if things really got tough, the windows in the first area to break through. And I've seen people do that, but let's hope we don't go there tonight, that's for sure. Okay, at this time, then, I'd like to ask for approval of the town council minutes for the July 25 meeting and for the August 1 meeting. Do you have a motion to accept?
Second.
Any discussion whatsoever? Okay, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. It's approved. All right, President's comments, and we have a pretty lengthy agenda tonight, so I will keep them brief, for sure. We have, first of all, as of today, we... Our new Director of Parks and Recreation started, and we will... Well, some of us have had the opportunity to meet Director. Her name is Rena Blumenthal, and she started this morning. She's from the great state of New York, comes with a lot of experience, and we wish her the very, very best. And I know that very shortly, in the next upcoming council meeting, we'll have the opportunity to meet her, and I know that there'll be other staff meetings with her as she gets her feet on the ground. I, along the lines of up the Parks and Rec, I had the opportunity, with my wife and I, last night, to visit the outdoor concert, the Summer Series. Last night, it was the band called Mr. Chuck. It was an eight-piece rock band, the horns and Caroline were very, very impressed. The rain held off, luckily, it was 6:00 to 7:30. I was amazed how many senior citizens, other than me, were present, and, believe it or not, I was wondering how they take to that music, but they seemed to thoroughly enjoy it. So I was pleased, and I know next Sunday, and I know this is in cooperation with the Celebrate Coventry Committee, I believe it's a last summer concert. It is a... Going to be a band entitled John Connors and the Irish Express. I don't know if anybody have heard the band, but it's obviously, it'll be Irish music, and it'll be from 6:00 to 7:30, next Sunday, August 28. Also, in the Department of Parks and Rec, I attended the start of the soccer season at our soccer complex on Fishville Road. I went for the instructional league, three-year-olds, my grandchildren, cousins on the same team, and then also for the other ages, and it was just lots and lots of individuals excited for the new season, new uniforms. The only... Parking's always tight, and I don't have the answer for that. I wish we had twice the parking, because you go running around, but that's something we have to look into anyhow, or maybe additional fields, because it doesn't seem like attendance is lacking for soccer players. Lastly, I'd like to remind all our Coventry voters that there is going to be a primary Tuesday, September 13th, only three weeks away from tomorrow. So we encourage all voters to get out and do their patriotic responsibility and vote for the candidates of your choice. Not all districts have primaries, but some do. Actually, if you count the U.S. Congress spot, I guess all districts have primaries. Would like that correction there. So don't forget to vote, September 13th, Tuesday, three weeks from tomorrow. So that's it on President's comments, and next we have the school committee report, I believe, for Mr. Florio, the Vice Chairman of the school committee. Be so kind to fill us in.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. President. How's that?
Do you all hear?
Can everybody hear?
No.
Oh. You gotta get right close to it, David. How's that? Oh, there we go. Thank you.
I'd like to greet everyone on behalf of the school committee, Mrs. George, Graham Waters, Nick Nicholas Carver, Mr. LaBosnier, Mr. Shively, Ms. Carlson, and Ms. Committee. Just want to let you know that all day kindergarten will begin on September 1st. The modular classroom at Hopkins Hill Elementary School has been delivered and is in the process of being set up at Hopkins Hill Elementary School. This will be ready for occupancy by the start of school year. There will be an instructor appointed on August 23rd at our school committee meeting for the Navy National Defense Cadet Corps unit, which is actually the Navy ROTC at the Coventry High School. That instructor's name will be announced tomorrow night at the school committee meeting. Superintendent Greg Levis is in the process of creating a student cabinet, which will meet on a monthly basis, and will be an excellent opportunity to listen to the student voice. All principals, custodians, and district staff have been working hard to ensure all buildings are ready for students to begin school. The school department is the first in the state to offer telemedicine services to our staff. This service allows employees to access medical care with a doctor through Skype. This is an effective and efficient way of receiving medical care while hopefully reducing the district's medical expenses, and hopefully reducing the need for people to go to the emergency room and the hospital for such minor issues as if a child is sick, if their children are sick, they can have access 24/7 to a physician who then give them, who then speak to them, and give them a prescription, called CVS, and the prescription will be sent. So it's quite a good program. Two weeks ago, we had the opportunity to attend a... This is not in the report. To attend a listening session at Hopkins Hill Fire Department where the main speakers were Graham Waters and Greg Levis. They did a great job. They addressed the issues of the community and answered everyone's questions, including Chief Robinson. So it was a very good night. I'm sure it will continue. Thank you, Mr. Waters, for being accessible, as well as Mr. Levis, through the community. That's it for our report this evening. I appreciate your... I appreciate the recognition and kindness as extended. You have a great evening. Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Florio.
You're welcome, sir.
Good luck with the school year.
Thank you, sir. We'll keep you updated.
Let's do. Okay, council district updates. Mr. McGee, I was gonna start with you on the far end, if you're ready.
Yeah, I...
District?
Actually, things are running pretty good, Mr. Creo. I have any issues. The only questions I've had, and maybe Mr. Waters could verify that, is the question on the middle building, and Anthony, I know it's on the district across the street from me, but it looks like there's been a fence put up, and they're questioning when that will be taken down. Do you have an answer on that?
We are still in the process of working with the state to modify the crack funds to be used for demolition. They've been put up as a safety precaution, because if you'll notice, a couple, it looks like both portions are starting to pull away from the main building.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I have... Mrs. Carlton, Mr. Waters.
Yep, I have a few... Well, not a whole lot, but I have a couple of questions. I've gotten some calls from residents in District 5 regarding the tar patching on the roads over there, and how... I realize it's been high 90s, so it's probably not real... It's probably not set yet, but people are asking what happens when they get it on their tires or on their cars, and then they track it onto their driveways, or how do they get it off the cars? Is there something that is recommended? Is Kevin here? Oh, there you are, hiding behind Mr. Jackson. Can I ask him?
Sure.
Kevin, what do you think?
The crack filling that's going on throughout the town is to preserve our roads.
Right.
There's no way to go forward with the money that we have without doing overlay, and those funds aren't available for all the roads. The crack sealing that's there in these hot 100-degree weather, hopefully we're beyond that, you can easily, you can have a tired crack, you know, crack filler remover, the sealer remover, you can buy a Bennys.
So like at an auto place?
Yeah. If there's a problem, a major problem, they can see me, put the claim to the police department, and then we go back to the vendor on that. For the most part, we did an area, located them last year, haven't had any issues.
I don't think it was hot last year, probably.
No, but again, if anyone has an issue, they can contact my office.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. I did read the town manager's report, and I have a couple of questions. Under IT, the... Let's see. A quadcopter? Do I take it that's a drone?
That's correct.
And why does the town need one?
So the town is looking at a quadcopter drone for all departments. It's something we're just exploring right now? Yes, no, just one. We're looking at it for the planning department, the tax department, the police department. Basically, all of our departments will be able to utilize it in some way, shape, or form. Most immediately, our police department will be able to use it for assistance with their needs. Our planning department will be able to look at larger parcels of land from a high point of view.
Don't we use Google Earth for that?
Right, but Google Earth doesn't...
Of course, now is up to date.
Exactly.
True. So how much do you think it's cost, and where's the money coming from?
The price is a couple hundred dollars. We've seen others that are a couple thousand dollars. We're looking at different options. We're also working on a policy to put in place to ensure that we have guidelines for our employees and how we use it, and make sure those rules are in place. We've also sought out our legal advice for where it can be used and...
I have another question. So is this something we're actually definitely doing, or we're thinking about it?
We're still looking at it right now, but the benefits outweigh the cons.
Okay, I can see the kids fighting over it.
Well, hopefully, we don't have too many kids working for this.
No, I meant the department heads. Okay, the other question was, are we having...
This is a district report, right?
Yeah, well, because I don't... This is because I do send the town manager's report out now that it's a citizens' report, which I really do love, by the way. That's a great idea. Oh, cameras at DPW. Are we having problems?
I'm sorry?
Cameras at DPW. Are we having problems?
The cameras for the DPW facility is something that has been in the works for a while, is to monitor the yard, to prevent, if there are break-ins, we have video recording of anything that goes missing. So I don't know if Kevin wants to add any more to that.
This is three years in the making of getting the cameras. We've had flouts and equipment and supplies walk out the back like that is. So we put that... We included everything being fixed, and now we're looking for the cameras to be able to solidify, so that we don't have any issues with the lost town property.
Is this in your budget for this year?
It's in the IT budget, yes.
Oh, in the IT budget?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I know it's under IT, I just wanted to make sure. Also, just an update for Shady Valley residents. Looks like we're still on board for fall at some point. Do we know month-wise?
Yeah, same as we indicated in the email to you today. As soon as the pond is grown up...
Right.
We're gonna be able to... Because the water table's so high, we're still doing excavation now to put those drywalls in, they'd be in the water table. So we're gonna put them in the dry season, so we're gonna put about another six to eight weeks before we get a chance to get in there and get it done.
Right.
All the materials we have on hand, ready to go.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. And... Oh, did we ever get a... Speaking of Shady Valley, did we get an assistant engineer for the summer? I never heard anything. You know, it was kind of a discussion point.
Right, I'm not aware if we grow on or not.
Now, at this point, we have the agenda tonight, is the next asphalt paving bid that's gonna, you know, take a lot of time for the engineer, the FBI, besides the subdivisions that are going out right now. So that's where we may be looking at that. If he can keep up with it with my assistance, then we won't have to have that expense, but we have there anybody.
Good, great. Okay.
Any other public works, question, while we're seeing?
No, you can sit down. Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. LaBosnier. Who updates in District 2 at this time? Okay, very good. District 4, I'd just like to report that we have a new business in, to Coventry. They are on Pilgrim Avenue. The company is known as J. Co. It is a medical supply store. Public can walk in, also rent medical equipment. If any of you go Cranston, they have a... Their primary business on Park Avenue. They're well thought of, and you should stop by if you have any need, or just to welcome a new vendor into Coventry. But it's nice, that's their second location now, and I understand, talking... I know Mr. LaBosnier stopped in a day ahead of me, but he's the son of the owner, and they plan four or five more locations throughout the state. So I guess they're really planning to expand, but the one in Park Avenue, Cranston, has been there for years, so Coventry's got the second one. So basically, that's it for me right now, District 4, and we'll move around along to licenses. Mrs. George, we have number one.
This is a license... An application by Green Public Library Association for Class F license for an event on September 15, 2016.
Okay. The legislature of the council, Reverend One, do we...
I would like to make a motion that we waive the fee and approve the license for Green Library.
Okay, that's a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Very good. So number two, under I, Mrs. George.
It's an application by Father John V. Doyle School for Class F license for an event on September 30, 2016.
I'd like to make the same motion, we waive the fee and also approve.
A second.
Okey-dokey. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Please wave. Number three, Mrs. George.
It's an application by John Studdler for the annual Labor Day fireworks event on September 4, 2016, located at 47 Indian Trail.
I'd like to make a motion to grant that license, Mr. President.
Okay. A motion made, a second?
Second.
With stipulations?
Yeah.
Yeah, with two seats.
For the local fire marshal pool and pool for police detail, with no obligations.
As stated, yes. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. The ayes have it. Good luck and be safe. Number four, Mrs. George.
Application by Rhode Island Public Health Institute for peddlers license on September 15, October 20, November 17, and December 4 through 2016.
I think, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve. I think it's a great idea, so many seniors can't get out, but I think it's a great idea to make local fruits and vegetables available to them, you know? So I definitely make a motion to accept that.
I do have a question, though.
I'll second. Second, first. Second, okay. Question? Questions?
In here, well, they do need the retail sales permit from Rhode Island and the certificate from the Board of Health, but there was a part in here that said, there was a question, how many peddlers and hawkers licenses are outstanding at this point, because it says no licenses... No, that's not it. There was a question about how many would be out at the same time.
Do we have a representative here tonight? If you could come forward and maybe help answer some questions, then?
Hi.
That would be... I'm sorry. Hi. I think next should answer. Or Cheryl, you wouldn't know how many licenses.
He's on.
There are a whole department licensed that fail for six to 24 days. It's just a couple of days. I think it's a great idea.
Four different days?
Yeah, I know.
And, okay, welcome, number one.
Thank you.
And will it be two vehicles? I guess I have a question.
Please.
Could it be two different vehicles attending these two locations on these specific four days? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We have... If I could just clarify?
Yes.
And you'll probably see our food truck out in the... It looks like a food truck, so it's... We have a small Ford truck that pulls a trailer that says "Food on the Move," and we serve 27 different sites around the state of Rhode Island. I'm Dr. Amy Nun, and this is Andres Vasco, who runs our work on a daily basis.
And did you say you have 27 other sites?
Yes, and we work collaboratively with the Department of Health. This is part of, if you all have heard of the big health equity zones initiative across the state of Rhode Island. So we serve many different communities, many different cities, a lot of different public housing complexes, as well as community centers, health centers, et cetera.
Okay, and is this your... What year are you in as far as, I think, here in Rhode Island?
This... I know I probably sound like I need a translator, but believe it or not...
Oh, I can understand. I've lived in a few states.
This project first existed as a big study sponsored by Brown University. It was proved successful at reducing food insecurity...
Right.
Particularly for seniors in public housing. And what we have done is to try to continue past the research project to turn it into a program, and we do that in partnership with all the different communities that we serve and the Department of Health. And we have also grants from the USDA.
So did I hear how many years?
Oh, I'm sorry. So that, as a research project, it was in existence for about six years, and we've been doing this project for about a year as a program.
One year, okay, as a program. Well, very good. That's what I was guessing, but I didn't know. How we said, Mr. Waters, on the process here, do you have a question or a comment?
I did. For the record, your name's here, please.
I am Amy Nun, and this is Andres Vasco.
The sentence I was referring to says, "The planning department finds no zoning violations and has no objection to its issuance, assuming no more than five peddlers and/or hawkers licenses are outstanding at present time." So we're okay with that.
Excellent. May I ask a question? And I'm happy to defer this to another meeting or to someone else offline, if that's more appropriate. If we want to continue on a regular basis, do we have to have the dates in advance, or is it possible for us to apply to have a license? The reason I ask is because sometimes the sites actually change the dates that they want us to come. We try to accommodate their schedules as well.
Flexible is...
George, you want to answer that?
No.
No?
I don't know. This is a first. It's really a first, so...
We'd love to work with you on that, to have something a little bit more permanent.
If you come in to the office or you call in, we can probably run it out.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, now, well, I do have a question regarding the... I mean, if one of these dates were to change, by how long would it change? A couple of days, a week?
It depends. So if you can imagine, it's kind of like having a parade. You're subject to the weather. Sometimes the senior centers or the public housing centers need the site...
Well, I just don't want you to run it into a problem with the date specific.
Right. That's why I was... That's why I was wondering.
So maybe can we add something to that? Should there be a difficulty?
You can't. I mean, because it's a first, I mean, we really didn't know. Maybe they would... It would be better to consider them, like the Palagi's Ice Cream, where they just have him go where they want to go under one... I don't know.
Yeah.
That is how we work in Providence, is a problem with a ticket.
What about two 30-day licenses or two 60s or...
We anticipate this will continue at least for another year, and we hope longer.
You're saying that we're approving four specific dates. Can we give the manager authority, should any of those need to be changed, to...
Rain dates and all these terms.
You know, for a rain date. In other words, if something were to happen...
We need flexibility.
You're only applying for four dates, and I want you to be able to achieve that, even if one of them goes away.
Absolutely.
And reschedule.
That would be great.
So can we change the motion to allow, if this rescheduling needs to happen, that we can give the manager the power to do that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So you should...
You made a motion for that?
No questions or concerns of that?
No.
Okay. So you want to state the motion will second and approve?
That should rescheduling of any of these dates need to occur.
Any of these four dates?
Of these four dates need to, you know, need to be changed, that the manager has the power to, you know, to change it to another date specific.
A second.
Motion made, with those amendments, and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, Mrs. George, then we have the next one, number five.
This is an application by Chantel Mello for a Victorin license at Straight Juicing at 1132 Main Street.
Okay. Is Miss Mello here tonight? Why don't you come forward if this... The council has questions?
I'm gonna speak with the applicant. That's okay, council.
She's quite good, dude.
Oh, all right.
Sorry, you know, it's great.
All right, and who are you, sir?
I'm a lesbian, David Thomas.
We need it for the record. All right, David what, please?
Thomas.
David Thomas, okay. Mrs. George, you have that? Questions of the council? Who shall start? Anyone? Anyone?
Well, yeah, I have a couple of questions. We, obviously, it's all public record, there's been, the last couple of times, we've had people commit licenses in their felony commitments, and it seems like it's difficult for us to approve licenses when we just don't know, you know, what we're getting into, and I'm... Maybe an explanation for that, or maybe the chief could give an opinion. I just don't want to... I don't want there to be an issue. I mean, I spent a lot of time, I read through it, there's quite an extensive, you know, arrest reports and so on that come with this application. Everything has to be... Well, we get all the information from whoever's...
I'm, I'm kind of confused what you're saying, Mr. Yee, um, arrest reports on, I'm, I'm not in the same.
I'm not sure if this is the same, I got, uh.
Yes.
I've got a bunch of arrest reports.
I don't, I don't, I don't have any record.
Not for you, Dave.
No, not for you, I'm talking about for, for Ms. Mello. If, is, this is, eh, well, let me know, I mean, uh, because I've got some issues.
The applicant, on, uh.
Yeah, we have the applicant.
Yeah.
Yeah, issues from.
What, are you able to come forward, or?
Yeah.
With, uh, with assistance?
Uh, hey, again, it's all public knowledge, I mean, I hate to bring it up, but we just have, these are things that we have to, we have to know, get character reference and so on, and we get information from all applicants, from our police chief, any, any, you know, uh, past felonies, and there's been a few.
That was from, um, it was, I think in 2003, um, and I, I was working for a company, and an ex of mine, um, had done stuff all in my name, and I went to court, and it all got, um, expunged, and I had never gotten into trouble after that.
Um, this doesn't seem.
Well, we have a few different instances, yeah, one with the company you talked about, then there's a bad check that we ran out also.
Oh, that was because, that check, um, was from the, I think it was Dazlock.
Yes.
Um, and my bank account got hacked into, and so my bank account got frozen, that's why the check didn't go through, but I did go down to the police station and pay the check straight away.
I mean, we just want to make sure, you got to understand, our, you know, we, we get all this information, we want to make sure, we want good business in here, you know what I'm saying?
No, I agree.
And we don't want any issues with, with our tax base, with people, you know, I mean, your husband has a reputable business, I mean, that's not even a question, but I don't know you, you know, and neither does anybody else in the council, so we just want to question it. I, I don't know if the chief has anything he could add to it, or, or.
Um, just what you have, which is our normal practice, we run a background check on people that come in front of the council for licenses. There was two bad checks, one in, uh, it was 2015, which was, was made good on for 146. Uh, another one was 2009, for 401, we can talk about that.
Check.
Uh, that one was also made good on, um, both were charged though, so we had to look into them. And then 2006, which was Home Depot.
Right, and that's when I was working for a company, um, and I went, I went down to the Rhode Island State Police, and I explained everything, I told them everything that happened, um, and I was forced to, like, it happened without my knowledge, um, but because he was an ex of mine, and because they knew he was an ex of mine, I, I got blamed for it, um, but they also did as well, and that's why they put, um, a year, I guess, of no getting in trouble, and I never got in any type of trouble at all, and I haven't been in trouble since.
Is it the police department that's having?
Well, the only thing in that one is a notice of delinquency in 2016, July, so I don't know if it's a totally, we can't see it, so, maybe so, um, if you look in there, the court showed a notice of delinquency on that charge, and it looks like you followed up and were committing restitution, or? So, it shows July 26, 2016, delinquency letter, turned under libel, and a notice of delinquency. There's a lot of court dates from that time, but I don't see.
And that, I think that's when I went, um, the only thing I did at the beginning of the year, oh, no, it was last year, I went to go get it expunged, that's all of that, and I've never heard anything since, because they told me after 10 years they were expunged directly.
So it did go from 2007, 2016, it was a little odd, but, um, that's the only question I had, was anything else change?
Yeah, that, that's almost a, a decade.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm uneasy with that one, uh, with any of this, to be honest with you, to be honest with you. Um, we have, from what I've read, it's, uh, on, on camera, uh, you know, giving out, uh, supply goods, Home Depot, and then collecting money back, and, uh, and, I mean, we had a couple, uh, quoted, uh, security mon-, uh, individual, investigator, manager, assistant manager, so I don't know about the boyfriend you had, or, or whatever, but, uh, that, bad checks, um, company credit union.
I, and I.
Job, Joblot, that, that, that's, uh, never mind 2015, 2016, it, it seems, uh, I'm, I'm uneasy with it, to be honest with you, with the application, uh, county, every town has enough problems with, uh, individuals that, uh, well, let's put it this way, you know, not been up and up all the way, for whatever reason, and to welcome a new business in, and I know, I know signs have been already erected, uh, as I go by all the time, and I, I don't know how that even began, to, uh, erect signs when nothing has been approved yet. Um, I don't know if anybody else is comfortable and not comfortable with approving this tonight.
What, what, at least to tell what the business is.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a juice bar, and it's a protein shake. Um, question, I'm the one who's more active in, in, uh, in this business, and, um.
But you're not, you're not down on the application?
I, I understand, I understand, I, my name's on the, my name's.
Your name is on the application.
And, and my name's on the lease too, so I'm just, um, and I'm always putting all the money forward for this, so I'm kind of like, concerned there, because I.
I don't see your name on.
So, we, we don't see your name on, uh, the application?
How, did zoning approve your sign already without a license, is that?
Without a license, um, I didn't know, it's already out, the, the signage is already approved through the town, and that's what Greg, the, uh, the landlord said, said it's already approved, right, because that's his signage, the signage is right on the building and it's on the street, that's the signage for it.
It might be Craig's sign.
It is Craig's sign.
Craig paid for the sign for your business?
No, he didn't pay for it, but that's, that's the actual footage.
Right, I understand, yeah, but, I know that signage has to go in front of zoning, or to the.
They said it was up, they, they cleared it, they, they cleared it.
And if you didn't have a victory license, um, what else would you do with it? I mean, is there something besides juicing and?
Just straight juicing, juice bar, protein shake.
Do we have, uh, Mrs. George, and then you can point it out where, as far as the applicant for the license, where exactly is that?
Right here.
Right here.
Yeah.
Right at the page.
You have two, two pages down. From the right.
Yeah.
No, no, you got to do four. It's, it's, it's right after reference five.
Right after, it says reference, oh, you just passed it, it's one more, you're, sorry, reference five.
That's reference two.
Yeah.
I'm going reference four, reference five, as long as the other, the name down, yeah. All right, well, the name is not correct, is that right? If, uh, are you going to be the owner, or are you not?
Well, yes, I'm one of the owners, yes, I am.
One of the owners.
That's right.
Why should we have both names down, uh, Mr. Grom, it's, uh, you got two owners?
I think that would be preferable.
I, we thought that my name was, I, I already filled out the application, I thought my name wasn't on the application.
It's not.
It's not, and the one that is, there's a lot of paperwork here, so, um.
So, what do we need to rectify the situation? I'm just, uh, trying to get to the bottom here.
Do we have to refile another application with his name on it to, for consideration, uh, the bar bet, or?
Yeah, well.
Or can we make an adjustment tonight?
They would have to do a check and review.
Well, he's a business.
Well, they also are.
He's a business in town, right?
You know, it's a, it's a process, yeah.
I, I think for legitimacy, we, we need, yeah, well, starting down at the application, I don't know how and when that can be done, to have it accurate if the council decides to approve it, or not approve it. Um, I, I'm open to.
The, the council could, could turn down this application and require that they apply or do one, if you'd like, if you need to, that's going to be plausible?
Yeah, they can do that.
The council can do it if it wants, it's, it's totally within their discretion and police power to either grant the application or deny it.
Well, I, I, I'd like to, not deny it, I would like to, um.
Just trying to be honest, and yet.
Yeah.
But maybe what, the next council meeting is, excuse me, next council meeting, excuse me, the next council meeting is, uh, September 12.
Yes.
So that's only three weeks away.
Right.
So, um, to get it right and duck the eyes, I mean, I don't know, uh, is there any other way to do it?
Just saying, can, can we, I don't know, what's changed the name on the application this evening, or that's not, if it's really not.
You'd want to do a, a, a research on the, uh, other parties.
Okay, all right, and that's.
Three weeks should be plenty to do.
Yeah.
And that's what.
I think we're going to, uh, I guess deny it tonight, then?
Uh, or.
Deny it?
Or, don't have to take any mo-, don't have to take any motion.
All right, I'll take, no motion.
That way, there's nothing in there, no action.
No action.
No action on it.
No action on it, uh, and what you both should do, or at least you, is, uh, come in and, and fill out the application all over again, and, the right way, and, and if it's both of you, or if it's just in your name, or both your names, but, to get it right. And then, uh, next council meeting is, uh, 12, September 12, uh, but, uh, for the sake of three weeks, with, uh, still a lot of questions, I personally have, and I, I don't think I'm alone, uh, with, uh, you know, we do welcome good, new businesses in, uh, versus a vacant building, but we want to do it right, okay?
Just make a suggestion, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, that's what I was asking for.
The proprietor's name is the part of the form that you fill in, there's the business name, and then the proprietor's name, and that asks for a home address, and then the application says, by signing this application, I consent to examination and release of records and information regarding my background, including police records, so, but that suggests to me is, everyone who's going to be in any form of ownership of this business should be signing it, so that the police can do a fair examination for the council to make an informed decision, so, maybe it's more than just the two of you, but if it's going to be just the two of you, then, you know, you both should sign it, so that the council can know what they're doing, that's the whole point of it.
I, I understand that, uh, I think, yeah.
I mean, you, I think you said earlier, if I wasn't mistaken, that this was a mistake, you were supposed to be on the application to.
No, I, I thought that, I thought that my name was on the application, and we, we applied for it, that's what I said.
So, we got to clear that up.
Okay.
You're going to, and if there's anybody else who's going to be a proprietor, that is, like, an owner.
I, I know what that is, I, I understand.
Then they have to sign it, you know, they have to sign this application.
They have, they have to be on the application.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, counsel. All right. Good luck to you. All right. Next, Mr. George, we have, uh, under eye, we have number six.
It's an application by Brody Hovers Motorcycle Club for an event, the charity scholarship ride on October 22 or 23, 2016.
Okay. That looks great, yeah. Uh, do we have a, a motion, uh, to approve?
Well, there's no discussion.
No.
Discussion on it, I mean, uh.
Well, we usually get discussion.
Okay.
Is it a motion, is that what you say?
Did I make a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to the second, uh, to, to.
Discussion.
And I also would, uh, would like to see if we can, I'd like to support the motion to make this a public comment, public hearing on this issue, because I think we've got a lot of people here on both sides, and a lot of questions.
That would probably then need to be advertised, uh, at the date of, am I correct in saying that?
You can entertain public comment on anything you want.
We couldn't.
Or you can exclude it, depending, depending on whether the ordinance or the state enabling act says that it must be a public hearing, but you can make it a public hearing anytime you want.
So I'd like to put that motion forward?
Well, just ahead of that, I know.
In other words, you can entertain public comment anytime you want.
Okay.
We got it.
So we.
Okay, that's it.
We got it.
It's very simple.
I think we've had public comment, uh, in the past, last year, I know that there's as many people for this as against it, I know, uh, if I'm not alone, we've all gotten, uh, quite a few emails, paperwork read, but, to answer your question, uh, I'm not against it, I don't know what it's going to, um, solve tonight, but, uh, I'll second the motion, I'll second the motion for, um, limited, and as far as limited means, like, uh, we do have other things on the agenda.
Yeah, limited comments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, and ask that the people commenting don't come up and say the same thing, uh, exactly, over and over and over and over again, because that does become repetitious, and, uh, the event's not going to change much, I know the comments may or may not be different, but that's what we just ask, so, uh.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Do we, do we vote to, uh?
Excuse me, of order, Mr. President, excuse me.
I don't know if we voted to open, uh, the, uh, comments, can we second that?
Maybe as a point of order first.
Oh, point of order, okay, yeah, point of order, I.
Two motions.
And, and, and I, I think the solicitor will have to, to answer this one, but there was a motion made in second, if you, that has to be acted on or withdrawn before Mrs. Carlson's motion, with your second, can be acted on, I believe.
Correct.
Because you had accepted the motion made in the second.
I don't, I don't agree with that.
I, I, I don't either, I think discussion comes up.
No, there's no, there's no.
Well, I'm, I'm just confused, because Mrs. Carlson said a public hearing.
No, no public hearing, public comment.
There's difference, public com-, public hearing, Mr. Cody, has to be advertised.
Okay, I, that's, that's why.
There's a difference.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That was a good question, sir.
Like, the western end and the eastern end.
Thank you, that was my only question. There you go, all right, open up for discussions, uh, go ahead, uh, for, for.
Do we have a representative here from the Rovers? Does that start it off, because I've got some questions.
Good evening, council members, Willie Newcomb, 71 Washington Street.
Okay, um, have you submitted a permit to DEM for this race?
I don't know what that has to do with tonight.
I'm just.
But there is discussions with the.
Well, it's all part of the process. So, do you have a permit from them?
No.
Because I know you do have wetlands, and you have, uh, the brook and everything on the property.
Yeah, there wasn't any issue with DEM as far as the wetlands on the property, and, um, I did a psych walk with representatives from the DEM, and they said they didn't see any problem with anything, other than a small little section of the kids' loop that they just wanted us to avoid, so, uh, we're in discussion with them, if they want anything else from us, we'll be sure to work with them on that.
Because I talked to DEM, and she said that, um, she did a compliance file, and that they decided that you weren't supposed to do the race because you are going over wetlands, and I don't have a copy of it, because I'm hoping our solicitor can ask for it, um, but that you do need to apply for a permit from DEM.
Well, if that's the case, that's what we'll do, as we've always done, uh, we don't have events without proper permitting, and that's why we're here tonight.
Okay, so, when are you going to get that in there, please?
I don't know, depends on their time schedule and what's involved.
Because I don't feel that, as a council, we can take this responsibility out without knowing that you've got all the permits you need, and that would be a big one, so, just asking, making sure you're doing it through channels, um, uh, what kind of racing are you doing for this weekend, that weekend, in October?
Um, it is a off-road motorcycle event for fall ability levels and ages, for the most part, I hope that answers your question.
Now, you've advertised this on the Netra site, so, that's all of New England that's invited to this, correct?
It is advertised on the Netra site, yes, it's part of the, uh, the Netra schedule, that schedule gets put out at the beginning of the year, and, so, we have to have a date on that schedule, and if we don't get approval, we just remove our date from the schedule, as we did last year, unfortunately.
So you've probably got substantial crowd coming, since it's advertised all over New England?
I don't know, um, you know, we never know until the day of the event, I would hope that we have at least the numbers that we had last time, um, you know, the, the events don't get the numbers they used to, but, uh, we still draw a pretty good crowd here.
But we are, please, um, Colonel, they are limited on their number of the 10Ds, right?
Only in the fact that they would have to get a detail if they went over a certain number.
What's that number?
I think it's 125.
Okay, so I thought, I didn't want to say that.
So I, I talked to, I'm not sure who I talked to, which rep, but they, they said if they were over that, they would call for the detail.
Do you have enough time to plan that, extra detail?
Yeah.
Depending on when they call you, though.
Yeah, we called tonight for the detail here, it's just within the hour if we can get them, but, so we did talk about it.
All right, and you are planning a two-day event, so does that mean that nobody shows up on the property with their trailers and vendors and all that stuff until that morning?
Some people may come to camp out on Friday night, some of the kids' events start early Saturday morning, so, you know, theoretically there should, you know, should be a few people there Friday night.
Is what that, can he, can he collect the permit?
In a motorcycle race now.
The event permit? I, I don't see, he put it in for two days, if I recall, I don't have a copy of it, but it was two days, so he put two applications.
Saturday and Sunday, yeah.
Yeah. Other than the detail for us, you know, and I talked about it, I, uh, I looked at it, the Western Coventry Chief signed off on the medical stuff for the event, and I felt comfortable with that plan, um, so I had no issue with pushing it back to the council, so.
I have a question about the, um, the people who are going to be coming the day of the event, um, do you expect people to be coming the day of the event who you didn't, like, sell a ticket to before the event or sell an entry to?
There are no tickets sold before the event, people come and, and pay for an entry fee.
All right, well, call it an entry fee, use whatever nomenclature you want, but they're going to be coming the day of the event and paying an entry fee to enter the event.
Correct.
So, um, how many do you have right now who have prepaid for the event?
There is nothing prepaid for the event, as we do not have the permit yet, so we certainly wouldn't ask anybody for it.
Because the, um, section nine of the application says that ticket sales have to be made on the day of the event, not during the, not on the day of the event, it specifically prospcribes that, it says you can't do it.
I asked the.
So if you're doing that on the day of the event, how does that comply with the ordinance?
I asked the, uh, town clerk when I applied for the application, and I was told that was the only permit, and that the wording in that is based on, uh, events that that applies to. You know better than I do. All I know is that we had the event, we didn't have any issue, uh, with the police department or the town or anyone else for that matter.
Right, but if, if you're selling all of the entries on the day of the event, it's, it's pretty much impossible for you, other than to project on previous history, uh, to say how many people are going to come to the event, right?
That's why we put in the application for, the application required is for 125 people plus, so, um, and, so any number on, above that, if we have less than 125, we do not need this permit. I expect there to be more than 125 people, and that's what the permit covers. As far as the discussion with the police department, I spoke with the chief and, uh, you know, if he wants a detail there, we're more than happy to have a detail there.
All right, well, do your ads say that there's not going to be any entry fees accepted on the day of the event? Because I know you're adverti, I, I understand you're advertising on the internet and so forth.
There is, um, the New England Trail Rider Association is a sanctioning body for the event, and they had it on their schedule, but other than that, no, there has been no advertising made, there has been no flyer made, because we haven't gotten the permit yet. So none of that will happen until after the approval of this council.
I mean, this is something I think you could address easy enough, um, I think to follow the ordinance, you, you really can't sell entries on the day of the event, they have to be in advance according to our own rules, so. So that, that might be something you want to address in, in the, um, the motion. The only other thing I would suggest you address is the, um, the effect of zoning, effective event on zoning ordinance.
Number 13?
Yeah, number 13 says this article shall not supersede any town zoning ordinance regulate, regulations which may apply. Such events shall only occur in those sections of the town as designated by the zoning regulations. Well, the zoning regulations, as I read them, do not permit or prohibit this, it doesn't say anything about it. So I think the only way to address that is to, uh, also put a condition in that requires them to apply for a special use permit, which is what you're required to do, everyone else who has something, a type of use that is not specifically delineated in the zoning ordinance, everyone else has to apply for a special use permit, so I would recommend that you do that as well, that the, the, um, the license imposed as a condition that they, that they apply for a special use permit.
I agree.
May I respond to that, please? I spoke with the zoning department and I was assured by Paul Sprague that we do not need a special use zoning permit, that this event does not change the primary use of the land, and that we have never had a zoning problem, and we will not have a zoning problem. He assures me, I was happy to, I started the application for the zoning permit, and he told me, no, you don't need one, forget about it, all you need is the permit from the town.
Okay, maybe, maybe you were told that, um, either way, um, we're going to decide, the council's going to decide, if we, uh, go ahead with this with the stipulations, and, uh, I, I go with our town solicitor that if in fact it got approved, it would have to be with special use of the zone. Um, I, I, I'm almost positive, and I'm not an expert, I don't think it's zoned for a trail bike ride out there.
It's anywhere.
No, sir, it's, it's a farm and a dwelling, and it's, stays a farm and a dwelling, we're not opening a business, we're not changing the primary use of the land.
The special use is what you're applying for, and that's what we're going to require, I think, if we even get by it tonight.
I believe, sir, that what we're applying for is something basically from the police department that says that they feel that public safety is being managed, that we have everything in place to have the people there.
I think that's already been said to us.
Right.
That's not what you're applying for tonight.
But the primary purpose of the application is that, you know, I just, I don't really understand why there's such a nitpick on this, on this issue.
All right, I'm just talking, I guess you.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's all right, that's all right. Um, like I said, if this goes anywhere tonight versus nowhere, like, not going to happen. I think, I could be wrong, but I think it would be, only go on beyond this with two stipulations, and I think, uh, it's already been verbalized. Uh, one is that no ticket sales will be permitted that day, and that's really clearly right. Page, page two, and, and we didn't invent this, that's, that's the way it is on your permit application.
Sir, but I was told that there is no other application, so.
Borrowing that, okay, no ticket sales that day, so that would be a stipulation, then, uh, provided a special use permit is approved from the zoning, as the council could require, and it states right here in page number three, that the town solicitor pointed out again, we, we hired a town solicitor to legally advise the council. So I think maybe, uh, with those two requirements, it may go beyond tonight, and then again, uh, it may not, so I guess, I don't know, any other council.
There's a couple other things too, because there's an indemnification agreement where the sponsors shall name the town Coventry as an additional insured party.
They did that, that's.
I didn't see the town, I did not see the town's name on it, I did too, but, uh, I'm sorry.
Well, it's there, okay, Norton, is it Norton, the town is, okay.
Where is it on here? Certificate of Liability, does it say the town?
For all the pages.
And I, and I don't feel comfortable, when I talked to DEM directly, that they said, you need to submit an application, and they need time to review the proposal, um, I don't think we, you know, should permit anything to go.
Actually, I think, uh, the point is well taken, they do have a certificate, it's easy to change, I, I don't expect you'll have a problem adding the town as a name in here.
Because it's not on here right now.
It's, um, it's a phone call to your insurer.
It's on there.
I don't see it, I'm looking at it right here, I'm looking at, uh, NTRA is insured, New England Trail Riders, um.
Unless you've got the wrong form, which is possible, but you are on there.